On the call ordered meeting of the county commissioners for April the 19th, 2022. At this time, Madam, do we, Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
At this time, I'll recognize Jason Falls to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and give our application for tonight.
With allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dear headway, body, and we thank you for this time where we can come together. God, we just ask you to bless those people that are out there that are protecting and serving our communities, our nation. There were those people that are struggling and help the decision makers tonight make wise decisions. And we ask all these things in your name.
Amen.
Thank you, Jason. This time, recognize any elected officials that we have in with us tonight. Betsy. And now we'll recognize any veterans in attendance.
State badge, U.S. Army.
At this time, recognize any law enforcement members. At this time, we'll recognize county department heads. Thank you, guys. All right, Commissioners, before you, you have tonight's agenda, proposed agenda. This time, I'll call for a motion to adopt or any additions to the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the agenda as read.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is citizen recognition. Do we have anyone?
Nobody signed up.
All right. No one signed up for citizen recognition, so we'll move on to number three. Number three is the consent agenda. Mr. Epple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the boards. Several items for consideration beginning tonight with item A, which is your monthly manager's report from the finance department that has all of your lateral budget transfers over the last 30 days, as well as a few operational highlights, including progress on the budget. We are well underway and are planned to present that to commissioners for consideration at your May 17th meeting. Also included is a year-to-date revenue expense analytic. Happy and pleased to report that revenues compared to prior year through Q3 are up about 2.5%. Expenditures are essentially flat, about 2/10ths of a 1% increase. Couple capital project updates, the DSS Health Co-location as well as Shell Building Four. Both those projects are well underway and moving along in a nice fashion. Item B is from Tax Administration, your March 2022 collection report. 97.64% of taxes collected through the end of March, which is almost equal to where we were last year, 97.66% collected. Item C, also from Tax Administration, your monthly abatement and supplement report for March 2022. Abatement for the month totaled $1,323.40. Supplements totaled $28,588.86. Item D for consideration is from the finance department, budget amendment number 53 on the year. This is for request to allocate $1.5 million in unreserved capital into our capital acquisition fund, and that will be used to help navigate the transition of our EMS department along with Shelby Rescue. Item E is from the Health Department, budget amendment number 54. Request to budget $73,052 in state grant dollars from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for our WIC program. And those funds will be used to offset existing expenditures for salaries, training, and advertising. And the final item of consideration is item F from our Register of Needs Office. This is a resolution to consider the appointment of two review officers that would review maps and plaits before they are presented to the register's office. And according to statute 47-32, the two, Henry Earl, who's already been previously appointed along with Donna Mellon, are the recommended appointees. Mr. Chairman, members of board, that concludes a fairly concise consent agenda, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, you've been presenting with the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions for Brian?
I can motion we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Our motion and a second. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. And we're on to public hearings, which we have one tonight, right? So, Madam Clerk, will you read that statement, please?
After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes the speaker a second time for a rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
Thank you. This time, next item is the Fire Prevention Code ordinance.
Good evening. We reviewed this at our, at the last meeting, and this requires two reads, so I'm just going to go through it quickly, and then we'll have our public hearing on it. So, what we are, what we're presenting here is a proposal with an ordinance for consideration to adopt the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code. We met with consultants. Perry Davis, who's our fire marshal, has been heavily involved in preparing this with legal. So, there's three parts to it. The first is to set the duties of the fire marshal, that's to enforce the code and spec fire-related issues. The second part is to adopt the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code. We're not creating our own. We're simply adopting that, so we don't need legislative approval for it. And the third part of this is to enforce, actually to enforce what's being adopted. And there's two ways of enforcement. One is through civil penalties, and the other is through some criminal prosecution on certain portions of it. So, and we're here tonight for the public hearing on this, which may or may not be required, but we felt it likely is land use related, so that's why we're here before you for that purpose. And, and we're asking that you adopt the proposed ordinance you have in your packets. If you have any questions, both Perry and I are here to answer those.
All right, members of the board, do you have any questions for Martha or Perry before we open the public hearing? So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the Fire Prevention Code ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Robert Williams, 814 East Hedges Coast Trail. Sitting right here, and I didn't hear anything about the fire code, anything about it, so therefore, I would recommend everybody know. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the Fire Prevention Code ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address. One last time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the Fire Prevention Code, please come forward and state your name and address. See, and then we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions or additional discussion on this proposed ordinance?
Since this is the second time it's brought before us, we've had plenty of time to look at it on our own. I make a motion, we accept this proposal and pass it.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, all is in favor, what indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed will say no. All right. Motion carries. We're on to the regular agenda. Next item is Commission for Women, Ms. Betsy Wells.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see each of you. And I'm Betsy Wells, the chairwoman of your Commission for Women. Over here is Deborah Blanton, our treasurer. And also in the room back there is Dexie Hargit, one of our members. Patty Alexander is our co-chair, and she's out of the county tonight.
Robert's here. Robert.
Oh, Robert. How could I miss Robert? Robert. Robert is the only male on our commission, besides, of course, our commissioner. Thank you, Robert. Now, did I miss anybody else? We have, I want you to think about 44 years. That's the amount of time that has been and existed, the Commission for Women in Cleveland County has been into existence. And so, and we are in the high tech. We're going to do a PowerPoint for you. So, this is the history. June 19th, 1978 was the date that the Cleveland County Commissioners established the Cleveland County Council on the Status of Women, and now we call it the Commission for Women. This group has been involved in many activities throughout its history to spotlight the service of women and to improve their lives. The, one of the major things that we did over the years, the Commission for Women started the Abuse Prevention Council in early 1980s, which then branched off to its independence. Now, this is the group last fall. The only one missing is Diane Davis. She was not able to come. But the current activities of our group, the Miss Cleveland County Fair Pageant, the Distinguished Women's Banquet, the Women's History Month activities, and the Women's Health Facepost Post. And if you remember back with the Cleveland County Fair, when Ms. Borders gave up the pageant, we went to the fair, and Ms. Gaston County came and opened the fair. And I'm afraid our commission just did not think it should be somebody from Miss Gastonia or whatever. So, Cleveland County Commission for Women took over the responsibility of having the Miss Cleveland County Fair Pageant in 2010 and have done so thereafter. These are pictures from over the years of the Fair Pageant. It's held at the cow barn there at the fair after Mary Acker has been the one that has been in charge and with her decorations and with the script, and I think it's been very successful. I know the girls really appreciate it. But one of the things in 1992, the women, we had done things like have speakers and workshops, and also like have special projects over at Gardner Web. But in 1992, the commission decided to have something special called the Distinguished Women's Banquet. That first year, we honored 10 women. If any of you came to that banquet, you barely got home in time to milk cows. Well, it wasn't quite that bad. And I'd like to recognize Henze Wallace, one of our members also that's come in. This will be our 30th Distinguished Women's Banquet, and it's going to be a special event, and we have been talking and planning. And if you'll notice our past honorees, I know that's very little print, but we've been, we've been doing this for several years. The last time was Lisa Proctor, Caroline Hord, and Teresa Wingo. You know, we skipped, we had to skip 2020 because of COVID. And here are some pictures. This is from, the ones at the, the one at the bottom are the three that were honored last fall. And then the one to the left is like 2019, and the one to the right at the top is 2018. You can go on our Facebook page, and you can see more pictures. Now, Women's History Month is in March. We recognize Women's History Month each year through our Facebook page. This year, the theme was women providing healing, promoting hope. We were able to spotlight women healthcare providers in our community, and this is how we did it. And this is posted on our webpage. And we've put it out to anybody on the commission who wanted to select or nominate anybody, and they were all different areas of health. And we were very proud of how it looked. We had not done this. We've done other things, as you saw from the history when I sent it to you. Also, our group is with women's health awareness. We post on Facebook things about breast cancer research, domestic violence, women in the law, what you can do, and then there's resources. Now, that concludes my, the PowerPoint. But there's more to what I want to talk to you about tonight. And I wanted to let you know that we have been very appreciative of the years, over the years, for your help with the banquet. And this year, we came out, we weren't in the red. We actually had some money, didn't we, Deborah? Left over to do the next one. And we really appreciate it. And there's been 103 women honored with this Distinguished Women's Award. And sometimes they can be living, they can be dead. Of course, they don't show up if they're dead, but somebody from their family will come. Anyway, and so, we just had a really good banquet. You know, we postponed it, and we postponed it last August and thought about, and then we did it November, worried about the pandemic. But it was great. And for those of you that got to attend, I'm so thankful that you did. And Ronnie, who sits up there on the board, is our commissioner liaison. I don't think I said anything about you, Ronnie. I'm sorry. But we're here tonight to relook also at your adopted policy of limiting membership of the commission to nine members. I know that's what we had in 1978, but it's been a while since '78. And our county's grown, and we have added more over the years. And we'd like for you to put back up to the number of 14. And I'll tell you, and this is why. We are a working group, not an advisory board. We meet regularly. We work together as a group to accomplish the projects which were in the PowerPoint, and we utilize the talents of our members. We don't have major problems with quorum camp. We depend on the current number of our members to accomplish our goals and projects, to the point that when it comes time for the banquet, now, of course, the 30th will be something special. But we have it all worked out with people that's been with us that, you know, how we divide up the labor. And it's, it's, you know, banquets are a lot of work, and it's nice to work with Jason. Anyway, but by doing, by having more members, you don't overwork any members. And our members of our commission have a wide range in age, and some are retired, some are working, and many of them are working, some are older, some are younger. And we just can do a lot more with more people. And so, we ask that, that you reconsider limiting our membership to the nine, that you look at the three that you did not reappoint last, last December, and that we could really use the help of them. And I would, again, we just appreciate you letting us come and speak to you tonight. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, boy, do you, do you have any questions for Ms. Wells?
I guess, I do.
Okay.
We're talking about a nine-member board versus membership. I guess, from my understanding, that you have, you have your board, but you can have as many members that you choose. Am I right or wrong? I don't know.
Well.
I don't, I don't think we're governing the number of members you can have on your committee.
Mr. Hutchins, it's in our bylaws.
Is it?
Yeah, and I get that number. And you see, when you selected, we are appointed by you. And this goes back to when Terry Sanford was governor in the 60s, and he established in North Carolina the Council on the Status of Women. And then you had the movement in the 70s of trying to get, you know, the county commissioners to sponsor a council on the status of women. And that's what we got in '78. And then it was changed to Commission for Women in the 80s. But it, we are, now, in the appointments, if you remember back on our membership list, we do have Shirley Layle, who is the only original member of the commission. She was there in 1978 for the formation of the commission. And she, but she's ex officio now, because she, you know, when you're ex officio, you don't get counted into the quorum. And she, and sometimes she doesn't always, is not able to get to the meetings. But like, the commissioner person on our board, our member, is ex officio. But the other members that's there, you know, we received the nice letters from Phyllis that tells us we've been reappointed or what. So, it comes through you, yes. We haven't had nine on our board in a long time. We've, we've had more, and it's moved up. And we can get so many things done with more people. And I just hope you'll look at us as being an unusual group in county government, one that's, that's 44 years old, and that you'll allow us to continue with a number that will bring good publicity to the county. And, and let us do good things for the women and for the people of Cleveland County.
I have been, one of my first board appointments was to the Commission for Women in January of 17, when I first came on. And, and I've enjoyed working with the group, and it's a nice group of ladies that do this. But when we were working on a work session, we looked at several boards that were large, and we decided that the larger the board, the harder it is to get a consensus, the harder it is to get a quorum. So, we decided at that time to change it back to nine. But at the time we made that decision, we had no idea that in 1978, when it was first started, that the commissioners at that time thought nine. So, we feel like that we're, we're, we're agreeing with what the commissioners in '78 did, even though we weren't around and didn't, didn't know all that happened. But as I was looking through, when you asked me about maybe reconsidering that, I went back and started looking through all the bylaws that we have, and I'm not positive this is an exhaustive list, but, but the, the commission itself is the ones that have, that has changed the bylaws over time. And, because it started out with nine, and then the commission raised it a couple different times to get to 14. But when we were talking about committees in 2000, in '89, it was on the, it was on the bylaws then, and it's not on the bylaws now. But in 80, so it must have been changed by the Commission for Women. But it was on there that you could have an advisory board consisting of 15 to 25 members to help with these programs. And somehow, the Commission for Women decided to take that out of the bylaws. I don't know why, but.
And yes, Commissioner, the Commission for Women, we have grown up our own bylaws for all these years. Now, we ask that, you know, that comes to the county. And I don't think we have revised our bylaws in a number of years, but it's something that we need to do. And we used to, it's, it was somewhat of an independent group, other than the appointments. Of course, we didn't go out and do anything that the commissioners would be opposed to. In fact, commissioners in the past have honored each of us with certificates of appreciation. But that's, and then we do change our bylaws. Within ourselves, we have bylaws, and then we have like part of the Constitution. So, that's something we need to look at. But the last two years of COVID, we met via Zoom, and we didn't meet. And now, it's so good to be back meeting regularly and doing things like we normally do.
But according to the bylaws that are currently, currently in, in effect, they were adopted in '81. So, you went from '78 to '81 to do the bylaws. And then it was amended in '89, and then it was amended again in 2008. And I'm assuming that in 2008 is when you took out that committee, where you had working members to help you, and you did away with them. So, now, you're asking us to give you more board members to do that work that you did away with the committee to do.
Well, you know, I don't, Deborah, do you remember that committee? I don't.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the bylaws.
I don't think, Mr. West, how we ever used that committee. You see, we worked very hard in the 80s, too, to try to establish a women's resource center. That was the, now, I remember, that was the group of people that the commission sort of helped form, and we were trying to get a resource center for women. And we worked through that with the hospital, and we had a house. But the hospital finally did a wing that was the Women's Resource Center. And so, that's when we gave that up. And so, because it was much bigger and greater and more things for the people than just, you know, what we had. So, and the money came in much better with the hospital. I bet, yes, I bet that's when that was. Thank you.
But I feel like that, that we need to stay with the, with the decision we made in our work session, to leave it at nine members. And if you want to amend your bylaws to put together another committee where you can have workers, I don't have a problem with that. And I don't, I'm assuming, I'd have to ask everybody else if they would.
Well, you know, to try to, the people that we've had that worked so well with our group, with members, and that, you know, they could make motions, they could vote. This would be going back, you know, I don't, you know, like Cleveland County Fair is coming up in a couple months, three months. We got the, and what are we going to do about the Distinguished Women's Banquet, when it was supposed to be a grand event, and the person that was helping to plan that's no longer a member of our commission? Now, whether or not they would go and become and help us, I would think that we need to pay them to do that if they're not members of our commission.
I guess, that's what I was asking, that you've got a pointed board that is responsible for the group itself, but you can have additional members, but they're not actually voting members, they're only members of the group itself that comes in and help you work. That most of the organizations always have so many people as far as they control it, but then again, they may have two or three times that number of members that participate and worked in the group. I guess that's what I was asking a while ago.
Like a committee? Like having outside people for the committee, a committee to work like on the banquet?
Yeah, it'd be, but still, again, you have your basic committee that controls the group, but then you have the other members that join the group.
Well, like I said, I don't know if, if people that have worked so hard in the past, and they have the expertise that we really have depended on, I don't know if they would just do it as a member of an extra committee. You know, you could put them on as ex officio. I mean, that's up to you. But when we were nine members, or 10 members, 11, we didn't get as much done and divide up the work as well as when we're 14. So, we would like to, again, for you to consider the Commission for Women as somewhat of a separate, with the fact that we are a working board, and we meet, and we have bylaws. But that's our request.
So, I have a question. So, what does other counties do?
Well, the only, we, the only, see, not everybody has a Commission for Women anymore. Durham is older by like a few months. They, they organize like in May of '78, where we did it in June. You have several across the state, but it used to, you had like Burke, now, Beckham probably still has one, Charlotte Meck has one. But not in our area, I think we're the only one that still has a functioning Commission for Women.
So, my question, so, Brian, can we research that and see what other counties might do? Or what other counties are doing? And predominantly, what's out there from other counties, one, in general, and then two, against our peers or similarly situated counties?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm assuming the question is around the number of women.
I'm, I'm assuming the question is around the number of women.
Numbers, functions, like, yeah. And the bylaws, so there's a comparison of bylaws to, against our bylaws, so.
And numbers?
Yep.
And numbers, okay. Well, thank you very much for your time. I'll be glad to talk to you individually and it's always good to be here and to see you. I, I know that the work of commissioners starts at daybreak and goes along and sometimes in the wee hours of the morning. But I do appreciate the work that each of you does.
Thank you, thank you for what the commission does as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is the foothills shooting complex, Sandra. Hey there. Good, how you doing?
Nice to see everybody, thank you. All right, so I'm here to give you an update for the last year at the foothills public shooting complex. And some of the new changes that we have made here at the range recently. So we recently decided to open on Tuesdays, but we've cut our hours of operations to close at six-thirty instead of seven-thirty. Thumb's not working. So one reason that we decided to do this is to meet the demands of our patrons. They were asking for another day of shooting. And so through the last two months when we started this, we have averaged about seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars a day being open on Tuesdays. But we're also saving by closing an hour early because I don't have to pay for the number of staff to man that last hour that really wasn't being utilized by the, by the community. Another thing that, another change that we have made here is to omit the dollar spectator fee. The reason for this, over the last four years, the average fees we've received was only three hundred ninety-seven dollars. And it was mostly parents coming because their children have, they have to have an adult on the range if a child is shooting who is underage. We more than make up for that dollar fee because the parents are coming in afterwards buying drinks and snacks and anything else for their ride home. So in June of twenty-one, we opened up our new clays facility. And since that time, I decided to give you all an update on what we've done on the clays range itself. So if you look from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two, we've increased since last week by about five thousand dollars with the clays only. And that's including the amount of rounds that we've sold and the clays admissions that we've sold. If I project what we will do from this time until June thirtieth and compare it to last year, we will increase our sales on the clays range to about nine thousand dollars to bring the total value of sales in clays up to fifty-four thousand. So we are also updating our archery range right now. The lanes have been cut in, the three D targets have arrived and the practice range is currently being updated. This is a sample design of what we're going to use for a new practice range. Building these little shelters over the practice targets will extend the life of the targets themselves, maximizing the cost of each of the targets. So what we are currently doing is we're going to be working on some sponsorships for the range. We're hoping to have an open house and invite the area high school kids to come out and participate. We're hoping that will get them excited so that when we start hosting competitions and tournaments that they will want to come out and use our facility instead of some of the other facilities around here. Also, we are hoping to get on the competition schedule for the twenty-twenty-three season. So Glock perfection for the first time has come into Cleveland County. I'm very excited about this. The reason why we haven't had it before is because Morganton County had what is known as the Glock Sports Shooting Foundation match. And I was able to secure the match this year for the November, month of November. I like Glock and the Sports Shooting Foundation because their philosophy more aligns with ours here at the range, that they want to have safe, fun, family-oriented organization devoted to the responsible use of firearms and encourage participation in the shooting sports. So they will have three different stages. You shoot the stages in multiple strings. Anybody can come out there and shoot. I have arranged with Glock to have some loner firearms for people who want to come out there and use them. You don't have to have a fancy holster. We just need to encourage people to come out there and participate. From Glock's application to host the event, I took their historical data. I just took the first five, the top five participants. They only have fifty of these matches a year outside. You'll see that Morganton County, over the last three years, that they hosted the match, averaged about seven hundred and twenty-five or so participants during their competition. I hope to beat that. I hope to beat Talladega's. So what do we need to do to get ready for Glock perfection to come here? We're going to cut in a few new bays. We're going to add some safe areas to the base of our berms. We're going to add a little bit of additional parking and finish the pavilion on the clays range. And this is a graph here where we intend to cut in some additional bays to host the match, to accommodate the thousand people that we hope to have during the range that weekend. And additional parking there in the yellow. This is a sample of a safe area at the base of the berms that we'd like to cut in for the participants to be able to use. And you'll see it's mostly enclosed. Two or three people can go in there to, if their firearm needs to have some grease work done on it or change its spring, they can do so in this area. There is no ammunition that's allowed to be in that area. So how can we be successful in doing all this? Well, we started organizing some committees and teams and reaching out to our community to see who would like to be active and involved. We're developing, we're designing logos for our T-shirts. We reached out to American Legion. They are going to loan us their cookers so that we don't have to rent cookers to cook food to sell on the range that weekend. We're reaching out with emergency services. Glock themselves will be supplying some of their personnel to make sure that the matches that we host here are aligned with their rules and regulations. But you'll remember that I told you that Morganton didn't host the match for the last two years and they canceled just recently. And being aggressive, I reached out to Glock and asked them if I could have Morganton's spring dates for next year. So it is highly unusual that Glock aligns more than one match a year to a particular range. I have been told that if we are successful in November and again in October, that they will give me a second match in November. And Cleveland County will be hosting these matches twice a year until we decide no longer to host it. So they would like for me to kind of track some of the economic developments that it has here or the impact that it has here on Cleveland County with our hotels, which are already booked or booking. We reached out to some local restaurants. And then our gas stations, people buying gas and paying the taxes here that are coming to visit us. But like a Gensu knife commercial, there's more. I have reached out to the Steel Challenge Association and they have a World Speed Shoot. That is a national event. They also have international participants that come over and will shoot this event. They usually award the contract two years at a time. Talladega, Alabama currently has the contract, which expires in twenty-twenty-three. And so I've reached out to see what does, do I need to do to have this event come here to attract more people to Cleveland County? So I'm working with them right now to put in a bid. If the bid is awarded, hopefully we can have this match in twenty-twenty-four. The only current bid that I know that is currently being held is Colorado has reached out to World Speed Shoot. And that's the update on the range. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Sandra?
Does this, this, if you enter this, and, and I mean, what are the prizes? Is it cash prizes? Is it recognition by Glock or, I mean, I'm just curious.
So what Glock does is they do both cash and certificates. So they, they will give us for hosting the match, two certificates. And then for every one hundred participants, they will give us a certificate that we can raffle off or auction or give away. And then to the winners, they will either give a cash donation or they will give them a Glock certificate to turn into a Glock certified dealership. And you can choose the Glock of your choosing. To be eligible to participate in this match, you must be registered with GSSF, Glock Shooting Sports Foundation. Thirty-five dollars a year, twenty-five dollars each year to renew your membership. And each entry is thirty dollars. So for thirty dollars, you can come out. They kind of do it on a Lewis system. So even if you're not the top winners, somebody towards the lower third can win their certificate to win Glock.
Is it age or just everybody competes together or?
They have nine different divisions, amateur and expert, law enforcement. They also have a team competition. So I'm trying to reach out to our sheriff's departments in our state and also South Carolina and Georgia to see if they want to do like a friendly team competition. And our range will have a wrestling belt with some plaques that we can pass back and forth each year through the winners to try and encourage some friendly competition. The youngest age that I know that comes out there to compete is about eight years old.
Also for volunteers, they give us certificates for so many volunteers we've got. So they can draw a certificate, could mean they pistol. Or a amount of money towards purchasing the pistol. And two, it's been several years, but Chris, my son and I, several of us used to shoot the Glock series. And we were shot from Florida to Pennsylvania. It's one of the things that the group of people that follow them. And they'll start and they'll come in and stay the whole weekend and shoot whatever. So it can be an economic development boost to the county because why is you're going to buy gas, food, whatever, and some lodging? So it, 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 a boost, it can be a boost to the county itself. But I know two of our chief ROs and I are planning on going to a Glock match in South Carolina next month. So they can have firsthand a match itself. And two, if we get there early enough, they'll, we can sit down on the debriefing and everything to get these guys up to speed so they'll know what to expect when it come. But one class I like is a super senior.
And, and to, to help encourage our county employees to participate, Glock has told me that they will provide us some loner guns. So as long as they're a member and they pay to enter, there will be a firearm for them to come out and.
And if you have a Glock that you have a trouble with, they've got gunsmiths armored will be on site. You can bring your Glock in and they will make all the repairs for your charge to that weapon that particular day. But if you've got modification to it, they take all the modifications out, so it's got to be strong.
Any other questions? All right, Sandra, thank you, thanks for all that you do.
Yes, sir.
And two, each one of the commissioners wants to, they saw the different committees out there. If anyone is interested in helping on the committee, you're welcome to see Sandra.
All right, next item on the agenda is opioid settlement. Jeff?
Now you're up.
Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today and give, provide a general update on the opioid settlement. As you are aware and has been publicized the last few months, the opioid settlement has been announced that was finished in July and that monetary amount being distributed to counties and across the state and across the nation have been announced. So today I want to walk through with you all a little bit, a little bit about, about the background of the settlement, what caused this litigation and the results of it. The impact of the settlement here in North Carolina as, as a collaboration with municipalities in the counties as part of the memorandum of agreement between the NCACC and the NCDOJ, as well as the impact of the settlement here in Cleveland County, a little bit about what that's going to look like here in the coming few months and years. So looking at the opioid crisis in a historical context, in twenty-nineteen, over, over twenty individuals in Cleveland County lost their lives to an overdose. On average, since twenty-nineteen, we, Cleveland County averages three hundred responses per year and calls for overdoses. Thus, seeing a, a large impact on the tax base as well as citizens of Cleveland County, seeing that the average per capita cost for citizens of Cleveland County is paying two hundred and thirty-two dollars per person in response to an opioid pandemic, opioid epidemic. That's more, more than they pay for any county service they receive as a general whole. And you see it's concentrated in general in the areas of twenty-five to thirty-four, thirty-five to forty-four. Really in those two areas is where you see the largest concentration of use. And representative and in correlation with the county population, you see a higher number of those individuals overdosing and as a result, overdose deaths in those populations as well. Thus, seeing a huge strain in the county, although this is not unique to Cleveland County. Nationally, you have over three thousand plaintiffs across the nation saying that opioid manufacturers and distributors provide a gross misrepresentation of long-term effects of opioid use for chronic pain and that they failed, failed to properly monitor suspicious orders of prescriptions. Again, you have over three thousand municipalities and localities suing to the, suing these companies, which led to the twenty-six billion dollar settlement nationally. This is the second largest national settlement since the nineties with the tobacco settlement. And this was in suing the companies of Johnson and Johnson as a manufacturer, as well as distributors of American Source, Bergen, Cardinal Health and McKesson. Really, the result of the settlement is that these funds are to be distributed based on the impact and the population that this crisis was impacting in municipalities. Through a partnership with North Car, with North Carolina Department of Justice, as well as the NCACC, led to a memorandum of agreement of how to better use those, how to use those funds in a sustainable.
That's all right. That's all right.
Really in, in a collaboration with the NC, NCDOJ and the NCACC.
All right, Jeff, thank you. You should go ahead then.
Absolutely. Again, as I was saying, as part of the settlement, really, North Carolina wanted to capitalize on better use of funding here in North Carolina, which led to a memorandum of agreement between all one hundred North Carolina counties, as well as forty-seven municipalities, bringing, bringing in over seven hundred and fifty-seven million dollars here to North Carolina to be distributed amongst the counties and these municipalities. From that, from a Cleveland, in Cleveland County, we're expected to see seven point two million dollars over the next sixteen years and eighteen payments. The first two payments to begin in spring and summer of this year, and thus going into twenty thirty-eight. And really, part of the memorandum of, of agreement for the, for this funding is really focused on two strategies. And option A is a high-impact abatement, which really looks at these tried and true uses that remedy opioid addiction, as well as prevention, such as an oxalone distribution, better known as Narcan, getting that in the hands of public safety personnel to better respond to overdoses, as well as reentry programs, those who are incarcerated from opioid use disorder, allowing them and providing access for them to enter back into the, into the community. And option B is some additional remediation, which is more county-specific, really a strategy-based approach to work with community partners that focus on areas of treatment, prevention and other strategies. on areas of, uh, treatment, prevention, and other strategies. As part of this, uh, has been a huge peer collaboration throughout the state, uh, earlier today, attending, uh, a session with, uh, some surrounding regional peers to talk about best practices that they're currently working on with, uh, within their communities, uh, as well as some ideas that we've been sharing here, which is what we want to talk to you all about today. Um, really some, some kind of next steps in this process is looking at, uh, from an internal perspective of working with the manager's office, health department, finance and legal of how to, how to best use these funds, uh, and really in, in talking with our peer, peer counties as well as internally, uh, looking at expanding, uh, mental health response through a crisis intervention center. Uh, really you see a high correlation between those individuals who are overdosing and, uh, mental health, uh, issues, so providing remediation for them, as well as a community paramedic co-responder model. Again, you have these high frequency users of the 911 system, uh, thus really trying to provide a more proactive approach to better align, uh, these individuals with resources throughout the community, uh, and provide just a holistic approach to, uh, providing a response to the opioid crisis. And with that, uh, there's no action required by the board, uh, just a general update, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
So Jeff, you guys talked about the Narcan, so are, are, is our plan to put the Narcan in, in the hands of all first responders or just paramedics?
Uh, so as part of the option A, uh, the Narcan is really just a, it's a, it's one of those tried and true benefits that they, they really say that you can use all of your money for Narcan distribution. Um, that's not the intent, uh, that's one of the strategies that, that people have been looking at, so, uh, really providing access to all public safety personnel.
Yeah, so this one, those, some, it might have major impact or deeper impact for the first one there and not necessarily have to wait on the paramedic.
Absolutely.
It could be a deputy or?
Exactly, and so for about 50% of our 911 calls, uh, you have a dual response, so you have a law enforcement fire and EMS, so whichever unit gets there first is the first one that can administer it.
There's been other, go ahead.
I think using it for that is a great idea, but I feel like that if we can, uh, do a prevention and try to help the mental people that are using this thing, and I guess all of us have some degree of mental problems, but, uh, but give help where it's needed because if you don't do that, then you're just going to need more and more Narcan as you go down the road. So I feel like that we need to be proactive instead of reactive.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I was just going to add that there's even ahead of this settlement that, uh, there's been grant opportunities through public health to distribute Narcan, um, just about anyone's hands we can get it into for those, um, to Mr. Gordon's point, first one on the scene, first one available is the difference between life and death. We've had, um, you know, al- already this year, almost 100 overdose calls, very few deaths, and, and I think that that is, uh.
That's my point. If you don't put the Narcan out there, then everybody that has restricted or has not changed their behavior is likely to die or come close to dying because it's going to take them a while to change their behavior, so while, while that is, while it is more proactive to change their behavior long-term, there has to be a lot of resources before you ever change the behavior.
Absolutely.
Are we involved in the jail or would we do this? Because I understand that a lot of what we have in the jail is mental health and a lot of that is, is the opioid abuse, et cetera.
And generally you see a high correlation between the two, so, uh, really trying to ti- provide targeted resources to help in that mental health. Um, again, kind of looking at, trying to attack it from both angles of really trying to provide assistance to those individuals as well as those in the opioid crisis.
This, uh, Jeff and I were on a call today with, that was hosted by Partners in Behavioral Health and, and, uh, there was probably a dozen counties on there, so just kind of brainstorming and that specific, particular topic came up, Commissioner Bridges, and one thing to keep in mind is this do- these dollars are specifically targeted towards opioid, not just mental health, uh, but that type of diagnoses and prescribing and, uh, you know, chemical-based treatment inside detention is something that everyone's talking about. It was, it was, it dominated our conversation today, so I think what you're, what you're saying makes a lot of sense.
So one last question. So these are controlled substances, are they not? So they're not, so you have to, you don't just give them, right?
Uh, for, uh, as far as opioid?
Yeah.
Uh, so part of that has been the, uh, in the conversation, generally as part of the lawsuit, you have a high concentration specifically in West Virginia, uh, you have this, uh, one town of 20,000 people, they have 2 million prescriptions between the two. So this is a, uh, it was failed to be reported from a, a company perspective, which was part of the alleg- part of the lawsuit, uh, and part of this too is to provide a remediation as far from a, uh, company standpoint to better monitor those as well.
That was going to be my next question. So hopefully there's some emphasis going on to control the substance upfront from that standpoint, because you do all you want for mental health and being reactive to the drug overdose calls with Narcan, if at some point the substance has to be controlled or better controlled than they are.
Absolutely.
Or it will continue.
And that, and that was part of the settlement as well to work, build those barriers in between and really provide those safeguards.
I was going to say, part of the rationale behind this too was, there's a lot of things, you can see this online a lot, in the 90s, there was a lot of advertising and testimonials about how this was a miracle drug, so many of these, these medications and so, but there was no discussion about how addictive it was becoming, and so that was part of the basis behind holding the manufacturers and distributors so responsible for this, you know, macro litigation.
Oh, I've seen it firsthand. I've, I've administered Narcan numerous times. I can tell you, it's out there and there's a lot of it out there and, and, um, so it's multifaceted, it's a complex problem.
Absolutely.
Is there any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you all.
All right, uh, do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to report? Brian and staff, do you have anything that you guys would like to report? All right, at this time, we're down to adjournment. The next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM here in the Commissioner's Chambers. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Settled.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed can say no.